Can I get everyone to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about the technical difficulty there, guys.
No worries. Just a quick meeting announcement pursuant to AB 361. This meeting will be held entirely virtually. All methods available for public participation are detailed on the first page of the agenda. Nicole, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Goff.
Present.
Commissioner Navarro.
Present.
Vice Chair Wong.
Present.
And Chair Malari.
Present. Thank you. All right, so moving on to public comment. This time is reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended that the speakers limit their comments to three minutes each and is requested that no comments be made during this period on the items that's on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or to verbally comment on items during the meeting, click the raise hand button and if joining by computer, please press *9. If joining by phone, when the item is called. The Planning Commission is prohibited by the law from taking any action in matters discussed that are not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment, Nicole?
If you wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda, please raise your hand now. We do, we have Justin Hamilton home. I am going to ask you to unmute yourself, Mr. Hamilton.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. I know I just see if you guy can talk to the fire chief and see if we get somebody to come out there and cut the grass down because grass is very tall. So, are you looking at the what Damar but Karen need mole on a hill and the other hill too? So if you can get our chief to do that, that could be helpy because there's gonna be fire soon.
Thank you, Justin. We'll take, we'll address that. I have noted that. Thank you. Any other comment?
If you have public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Nobody is raising their hand, so.
Great, public comment is closed. Moving on to any agenda changes, Director Cooper? Do we have any?
Chair Malari, we have no changes to the agenda tonight.
Great. Moving right along then. Moving on to the consent calendar. Hopefully, everyone took time to take a look at the minutes. Do I have a recommendation to approve the minutes of the February 24th, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 22nd meeting.
One second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff. Vice, or excuse me, Commissioner Navarro.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wong.
Aye.
Chair Malari.
Aye. Thank you. All right, so moving down to public hearing. The item on the agenda is the Core Tree Care Yard Temporary Design Permit. Do we have a staff report? All right, moving it on to William. Thank you.
Good evening. Let me see if I can put my, share my screen here. Can everybody see okay?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Malari, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. My name is William over the Planning Division and I'm here to give a presentation on the Core Tree Care Temporary Design Permit. So just to get our bearings straight, I want to provide a location map of where this project is. The project is in 352 Green Island Road. It is a vacant site and it's accessible by Green Island Road. It's directly next to the Wine Direct Warehouse and to the south of the site is All Bay Lumber and Sutter Hall Winery. To the east of the site, it's vacant and to the north of the site is vacant. The site is in the general industrial zone. So here it is in the yellow square there that I've marked out. The site itself is smaller than the entire parcel because the southwest of the site is the kind of like the spillover park for Wine Direct. So here's the project in a nutshell. It's a 3.8 acre site in the general industrial zone. The applicant Core Tree Care prepare proposes a temporary maintenance yard for 101 maintenance vehicle parking stalls, 46 employee vehicle stalls and equipment storage. What makes it unique is that they are proposing this for two years. So if they are approved today, it would end on March 24th of 2024. They are requesting some reductions in development standards and that's why staff is elevating this design permit to the Planning Commission. So here's the site plan for the project. I have the site encompassed in the red there and in the yellow is what I mentioned earlier, the Wine Direct Parking. Access is on the southeast, shown in this kind of beige entrance arrow here. And they have 101 of these maintenance vehicle parking spots shown in the blue. Each spot is about 40 by 10 and then they're separated by about 35 feet. And then here on the east side, on the bottom is actually east, is the employee parking for about 46 employees. So that's the site. And let's go on to the requested reductions for standards. So there's four major reductions for standards that they're requesting. For landscaping, the American Canyon Municipal Code, ACMC, requires the 20-foot setback facing the street and the parking lot areas to be landscaped. Unfortunately, the project is proposed with no landscaping. For the employee restrooms, the municipal code requires restrooms to be, if it was a permanent restroom, to be connected to city water and wastewater. And for this project, because it's only a two-year stay, the applicant is proposing to use portable restrooms and they'll keep everything fresh. Next, we have parking lot lights. For the municipal code, it requires all parking lots with more than three stalls to have parking lot lights. And the applicant is proposing, instead of installing full light standards, to operate one hour before sunrise and to end operation one hour after sunset. And lastly, for truck operation and parking lot area, municipal code requires permanent and all-weather servicing. The applicant proposed to stabilize the ground with asphalt chips. And in conjunction, they will prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan and hire a qualified SWIP developer, a QSD, to ensure the water quality complies with state local standards. So those are the requested standard reductions. Oh, I have some photos of the site. These are taken from Google. So if you're traveling westbound, the top photo shows how the site is. It's only, it's a very deep site, so the entrance is very small and there's not much to see from the public right of way. On this, the bottom photo is the entrance seen going eastbound on Green Island Road. So as you can see, it's vacant and then to the west is the parking lot for Wine Direct and then Wine Direct Warehouse is to the west. And so the applicant did propose some benefits. One of the major ones is that they're offering to, they will fuel their fleet, which is probably 101 of the maintenance vehicles and their employee vehicles in our city fueling stations for the two-year operation. The other two that I'm adding here is that the project kind of enhances our general plant goals. So the project helps maintain overhead electric utility line easements. That kind of, that prevents high wind event emergencies and that could spark wildfires. So that's the reason why they're there. There, this, this team, the Core Tree Care team is, is out there to reduce overgrown vegetation easements. And lastly, with another parcel that complies with the SWIP, Stormwater Centimeter Control would help ensure that another parcel of the city has quality surface, subsurface water resources. So those are some of the project benefits. And the city did do notifications to nearby neighbors. We did a friendly neighborhood letter in December and received no response during that period. And then we did our usual public notice on March 11th and we also received no letters of support nor opposition for this project. So that's all I have. The staff recommendation is to approve the Core Tree Care Temporary Design Permit. Oh, for CEQA, I don't have a slide for that. For CEQA, the, the site is categorically exempt because it's a minor alteration to land. If you have any questions, I'm here. The project applicant, Mr. Christopher Hernandez, is here. And then the property owner representative, Ron DeFabio, is here as well.
And also, we have Edison Bisnar from Public Works. He's also joined us tonight, too. We're happy to have him.
Great, thank you, William. Mr. Hernandez, do you have any comments to add to the staff report?
No, everything seems to be, you know, in line with what we've been discussing over some months. Just happy to be here with, finally get to this point. And, you know, we'll be good stewards of the city and, and, you know, comply with all the stormwater protection plans, all that's in place with the, with the state of water. We have a QSD already, all that stuff's in place. So, yeah, we just look to be a good steward of the city and do our best to keep that site maintained so it's not an eyesore for you guys down there, which we pride ourselves on being a top-notch company that performs utility tree service for different utilities throughout, you know, the western coast, the west coast or the western United States. So, yeah, we're just happy to get to this point. Hope we get approved.
Thank you. I'll open it up to any of the planning commissioners for any comments before we open it to public. Not currently. All right, Nicole, let's open it up to public comment and see if we have any fearless commenters.
Okay, if you have comment on this item, please raise your hand now. There are several attendees this evening. Once again, if you would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand now. There does not seem to be any public comment.
Great, thank you. I just had one. Mr. DeFabio, did you have a comment?
No, I did not.
Okay. Oh, I just had one, just so we say we're gonna use it for 24 months, but is there a possibility that it could be extended thereafter? Based off of the project or that you're working on or?
Yeah, there is a possibility. The way I look at it is when we're approaching that point, I figure we could be in discussion with you guys, but it would take more, for however long that period would be, whether it would be another year, two years, three. Working for the, for the people that we work for, stuff can change at any moment. So when we start getting to that point, I believe we can start discussing that and see what we need to do to move forward.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments, questions from the commissioners before he asks for a recommendation? All right, so, and Mr. Goff?
Thank you. I was just reading through the staff report and I guess either William or Brent can clarify some things for me. It says on August 21st, 2021, Mark Stinson, the Public Works Department, observed Core Tree Care was tracking dirt and mud into Green Island Road. So is that when we became aware of them operating out of that site as a city?
Yes. I'll try to tackle that question. So that's when we were aware, Public Works noticed that they had started using that site as for parking. And that's when we notified that, that there's the process of the administrative design permit that have to go through before that. Since then, they have vacated the site and it's, it's not in use and they're waiting for the approval before they can come back.
So it's not in use at this point in time, I guess, was really what I was asking. You know, this is reminding me briefly of something we went through about a couple of years ago on the other side of the highway. It seemed like a very similar situation where subcontractor from PG&E set up services on trucks to move trucks in and out, again, without filing for any type of permits or anything like that with the city. That's concerning to me. Second subcontractor for PG&E to really do the exact same process within our city without any notifications or anything until we became aware. And then, at that point in time, the comment that was mentioned there was trucks for, you know, mud and everything out on the Green Island Road. If this is approved, are they contributing in any way, shape or form to the Green Island Road Fund?
You're asking me, sir?
I'm just asking anybody. That's my question is, is that part of this?
Never, no, I've never, there's been no mention of that.
Commissioner Goff, I think you might be referring to the Community Facility District for Green Island Road.
Yeah.
And all properties in the district do contribute towards the Green Island Road improvements.
So that's the property owner's responsibility?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, that leads me to a question. Is there a lease agreement for this?
Yes, I have not seen the lease yet, but to give a little bit more background, the, the site is, is owned by a property owner and that property owner has leased it to ICC and this is a sublease of that lease.
Okay, so the, the entire property is owned by somebody who is leasing it to someone else, is leasing it to a, to a commercial entity and that commercial entity is subleasing to, to this subcontractor of PG&E. Is that correct?
That's probably the best question answered by the applicant.
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Okay. And, and what is, what is the expected term of, of the sublease?
Two years.
Vice Chair Wong, did you have any comments?
No, the question I had was the same point that Mr. Goff raised. I am sort of curious though, and maybe the applicant can shed some light on this. In your introduction, you spoke to the fact that you work with other utility companies on the west coast. I would imagine that our rules for having a permitting process in the city of American Canyon is not uncommon to other cities where you do work. So I'm wondering why you didn't approach the city for this permit in advance of starting work?
Never, never happened. This process has never happened anywhere with any piece of property I've ever rented to park my trucks.
Okay, so. Director Cooper, are city processes are different than other cities on the west coast in this respect then?
Um, Vice Chair Wong, I can't speak to the other cities and their rules, but to my knowledge, you know, it's, it's, our regulations are fairly typical. Evaluating uses on land and for their impacts, whatever they might be, is, is a typical process in California.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman, you unmuted?
Yes.
Well, can we help you?
If you knew eventually I'd have.
I did.
Right? So my question really is more directed towards staff because staff had me a little confused when they talked about their, and it's not up anymore, so I can't recall it exactly, but when they talked about the second bullet point of benefits in terms of overhead lines. For me, and you guys all have heard this in the past, the thing about overhead lines is I'd like to see them moved underground because that is the ultimate in fire safety and eliminates the need for the routine tree trimming, which sometimes goes overboard. We've all heard stories on that end. Sometimes there have been encroachments on properties without the property owner being notified and lots of trees being cut excessively and so on. So my question for staff is, what was that bullet point about? Are we going to be receiving funds to, as a result of this, to underground lines elsewhere in the city? Because that would be something that would really be a benefit. Otherwise, I'm not sure I'm understanding what a benefit of maintaining overhead lines is.
I think I commented to it a little bit.
Great.
Go ahead, William, that's fine, but I think I can comprehend, well, I can deal with it this way. The PUC sees it the same way. Through their regulatory powers, the lessor, excuse me, the employer of this prospective applicant has committed to a PUC-approved program. I believe the period is 22 years to underground all of its lines. I think the intent meant in the second bullet point would be to facilitate the ongoing obligation that exists presently that is documented in the probation matter before the United States District Court, where PG&E was found to be a convicted felon of accomplishing the required setbacks on several hundred lines of PG&E that still remain above ground. So I think the point is to facilitate that work being done. I don't disagree at all with the undergrounding. That's now financial commitment of the employer of this applicant. But nonetheless, one of the conditions of probation of that same entity that's employing Core Tree is the fact that they're still behind on a condition of probation to their felony conviction. So I assume there are economies of scale where if they locate the equipment in one place, you know, it's more efficient for use, but that's the constraints that I'd see that are applicable here. This is the real world. If you want to get down to basics, this less C is facilitating PG&E complying with a condition of its felony probation before the United States District Court of Northern California.
But so I, I'm, I'm still not understanding what the benefit to our city is that was outlined in the bullet point two.
You know, I can only surmise beyond that point, but I would think that the central location of the facilities that are used in this less C, by this less C is a critical element of efficiency to that. It's my understanding that they're currently dispersed in another jurisdiction, parking on public right of ways, have no central base for operation. Maybe Mr. Hernandez can supplement that. I think that's one of the rationales that I've heard advanced.
Yeah, no, I, I understand the efficiency from their perspective and why they wanted that, but what, what I'm lost on is in looking at the, you know, benefits, that slide that William put up of benefits to the city with three bullet points. The one talking about the overhead lines. I, I'm trying to understand what that was. I, I, because I just don't see a benefit to the city of maintaining lines. The benefit to the city would be undergrounding the lines. So I don't know what the, what the reference to a benefit there is.
And I think the thing, well, I'd add this. I don't know that it relates specifically to the way that that bullet points phrased, but I'm certainly familiar that several of the public safety power shut-offs that were occasioned, at least in Upper Napa, resulted from incidents where trees took out power lines, you know, because of various factors that were subject to that court order that I referenced. I know that's the case in other areas of the state and I, you know, I was, I'm just gonna say from my experience, I've suffered from, I think the total is eight days of the PSPS thing where it resulted from that specific issue. So is there a larger benefit to us all? Because we're PG&E customers or PG&E contract customers. I'm certainly gonna say there is, but that's my observation of what PG&E is, you know, imposed, has a mandatory duty to, to comply with probation that I described earlier.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions?
I have a follow-up question, if you mind.
Sure, Commissioner Goff.
I'm reading through the reduced development standards that have been requested for this site. Uh, most of my understanding, I'm a little worried about the lights. I think you probably should have some lights there, knowing all the, uh, things that have been going on with vehicles. Uh, but really my, my question is around the last bullet point, which is the request to use, um, asphalt chips versus actually, um, paved or permanent asphalt on the parking lot. My understanding around asphalt chips is pretty limited, but from what I understand, it's generally used for roads that do not carry as much traffic. There's not as much wear and tear on the surface itself. But when I look at the business proposal here, hundred and one trucks, and those are tree trimming trucks, so there's significant weight to them. I'm assuming truck in and out every single day, two years, that's a lot of wear and tear on that asphalt chips. I'm just wondering about what was the decision to go with asphalt chips versus just having that asphalted or, um, permanently paved?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, it's yours. So, yeah, what's the decision there?
Uh, because I'm not purchasing the land and we don't have a, a permanent, you know, contract there, so I'm not gonna go in and develop a parking lot for a temporary use that's gonna cost hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Besides asphalt chips, there's the use of, which is in the SWIP, we can put down, um, uh, wood chips, which is approved by the SWIP, uh, to, to stabilize the ground and, and actually helps with, I, you know, absorbing the water. Um, also I do have a, have put a ton of rock in there in the entrance, three inch rock. There's, um, plan on adding more of that. It's not necessarily just asphalt chips, but I do not plan on going and paving that parking lot. Definitely not. I don't know, and I don't have a, I don't have a contract that says it's, you know, beneficial for me to put that much money into that place. It's just won't work.
So let's just talk real closely just about the entranceway onto Green Island Road from the project site that you're talking about. Right now, you're talking, right now, there's a ton of rock down, gravel down, stabilizing that land, reducing the mud coming off that lot. Um, is that your intention to leave that as rock there, or is the asphalt chip gonna be going into that area as well?
No, no. So directly off of Green Island Road, there's a section of asphalt that is paved. It goes back to the fencing. Inside the fence, there's rumble strips that have been put in at least, I don't know, there's two sets of them. However, however, the length of it is maybe twenty feet of rumble strips. And then beyond that, for probably three hundred feet from fence to fence on either side, there's three inch rock that's in there that will stay in there. And beyond that, it trails off a little bit more. There are some asphalt chips in there in some areas. And, you know, we just look to adding more for dust control and obviously to, to stabilize the ground and then probably use some, uh, some wood chips also too that work very well.
And just so you know, my concern around all of this is debris being carried onto Green Island Road. Um, that was what kind of the opening statement that I read about was talking about mud and all that going onto Green Island Road. Um, and that's really my concern is how much can we expect that surface material, whatever it may be, to be transferred onto the main roadway in the Green Island Road from your trucks going in and out, your employees going in and out?
I wouldn't think any more than any other developer, people that you have down the street that have the same type of thing with, um, you know, uh, they have rock and, or, 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 uh, decomposed gra- uh, asphalt or whatever. I mean, there's other businesses that are a- all along that road that have similar types of use. You know, the rock place that sells, um, the landscape rock and stuff like that. I mean, the place on Highway twenty-nine that's right outside, you know, down to the right of there across this, you know, right there next to your guys' building. So, I mean, there's, it's not any different than a bunch of other places I've seen inside the city, I would suspect. And I do, and I have ran, um, if it, if I think it is tracking, which is, it shouldn't be once I get in there and, and, and improve it more. I have a street sweeper service that's, that's, um, helped us in other places as, as well as along that road when this first came up, where I get them on call and they come out and sweep the road for us.
That's one final follow-up out of the hundred and one trucks that you have there. Those always in operation every day in and out?
So the hundred and one was put as, as, as an overestimate, just so we wouldn't be limited to right now. And an immediate use, it wouldn't be near that. We probably have anywhere from serviceable vehicles that are hours that go out, that park there every night is probably more around seventy.
Your hours of operation on this, you have before, hour before sunrise and hour after sunset?
Yeah, so we, we typically work from seven to five thirty. So you're usually a half hour before and a half hour after. Mostly everybody's in and out of the yard at those times.
And my question's now is really leading towards traffic. We, you know, we're not doing a sequel on this. Uh, so my question is generally, additional traffic could be going in and out of Green Island Road. You're talking, uh, a couple of trips in or trip in, trip out, employees in, trucks out, trucks back, employees out. Um, you have parking for employees at forty-six and a hundred and one trucks is what you put down is I'm just curious on if you have an estimation of trips in and out of that area, um, on a daily basis?
So our work vehicles, you know, basically go out. There's not, in the middle of the day, there's not returning back to the yard, leaving the yard. Um, that could happen with a vehicle here or there, but for the most part, they go out, they leave. They come back at five o'clock or so, park. And then that's the same with the company vehicles. They come in at anywhere between six thirty, seven, they park their vehicles. And then once they come back and the company vehicles, the trucks, they leave.
One follow-up on that, your area of service from that hub, um, generally, what areas are you servicing?
So it's, it's, um, Venetia Vallejo, all the way north to the top of Calistoga. And either side of the valley up to the tops of the mountains, basically.
So they're all fairly, you know, within a sixty, seventy mile range, probably?
Yeah.
Probably less than that?
Yeah, a little bit less than that. There's the top of Calistoga up in the hills there.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Goff. Um, Vice Chair Wong?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hernandez, I had a follow-up question to what Commissioner Goff was asking about. When you talk about your hours of operation, when I hear about overhead maintenance of trees, I mean, overhead maintenance of overhead wires because of trees, I think of the wildfire danger that we've had in recent years. Given that this lot will have no lighting and you're limiting your usage to pretty much daylight operation hours, does that mean that you don't, do not foresee that in an event of an emergency that your trucks will not be used for, say, emergency work that may be before sunrise or after sunset?
It, it, it happens occasionally, not a whole lot. In the past few months, it's, you know, a few times. But it's more of a, you come in, you get your truck, they leave. They go do their work, they come back however many X amount of time and they come back and they leave.
Um, I guess I'm just concerned because wildfire season does seem to be a regular occurrence. And it may be that during that, our wildfire season, you know, your trucks may be needed to do these extended operations, you know, outside of natural daylight hours. Um, I guess.
I can, I can answer that question for you. Whenever there is a wildfire, PG&E puts, they put, they put up temporary yards that we work out of. We don't, whenever, whenever a big event like that happens, for the first couple of weeks, they, they work twelve hours a day, seven days a week. But they, they construct their own yards that we work out of. Whenever we're, when the glass fire and the LNU complex fire, we did all that work. But our, our crews worked out of a PG&E yard that was built by them and maintained by them. They have nothing to do with our yard. We just happen to be a contractor that works for them, that's looking for our own personal yard.
Okay, so all the work that will be done out of this site is just regular routine work? And if you do need support PG&E in an emergency, you're saying that you would be working out of a PG&E space, not this space?
If there was an event of a big fire like there was a couple of years ago, I guess that is the case.
Okay, um, thank you. That, that is a good clarification. Um, I don't have anything else at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Navarro.
Yeah, I just, um, I just wanna go further a little bit about the permanency of this. Uh, where, where is your company, um, based out of, headquartered?
Corona, California.
Okay, and so.
Lake Elsinore.
And so you're here for two years under some sort of project and then you won't need this space anymore?
We have a contract that lasts longer. We have a contract, a five-year contract with PG&E. And we're a year and three months into it for that area. At any time, God forbid something happens that's, you know, that our company does wrong, it could be canceled. Which we don't intend to have, we've been doing very well. But we have a five-year contract with them to perform work for PG&E in that specific area that we're working in right now. After that, it's back up to bid or PG&E changes with the wind, so who knows? But we, we have a five-year contract with them.
So, so part of the reason we're here is because of the, um, that we're, we're kind of setting aside development, um, requirements. But so then what happens if you end up wanting to be here, needing to be in this space longer? Um, then it isn't really so short-term. And, uh, and then we are again to look at, um, setting aside the standards. I guess that's kind of for staff.
It has to be a new application. This application is for, for the specific term, if you approve it.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Navarro, the, the conditions of approval say that, um, if they want to extend after the two years, then they'll have to put up, they have to do a, a major modification or a, a new design permit application, which then they'll have to do the permanent development standards.
And so if we did not approve it, what, I, I'm wondering more from, I guess, the lease or the owner, is there some economic detriment or hardship?
If you don't approve it?
Yes.
Yeah, I've wasted a lot of money. And then I gotta, then that's personal business between us and the person that's leasing it to us. How that's resolved, but yeah, it's down to everything, money.
Well, I mean, the, the last example where we were considering approval or non-approval, where there was some economic hardship expressed by the owner of the property. Um, so I guess that's where I'm just kind of, um, recalling and seeing, um, you know, the down, I, I'm trying to see what is the.
We, we do have the.
Upside of, of this for the city. And if we didn't approve it, um, what is the downside for other community, you know, the other community? Or, I mean, one I can see is you wouldn't be buying all the gas, uh, for your vehicles in the city. So that might be an economic downside for us.
We have the parcel owner as well on the call, um, if you'd like to respond to Commissioner Navarro's comment.
Sure, Commissioner Navarro, can you hear me now?
Yep, thank you.
Hi, this, this is Ron DeFabio. We have a two-year lease with, uh, that we've written for Core Tree Services. So the, the hardship would be probably mainly on Core Tree Services because we have a, uh, two-year lease. Obviously, if they were to not get approved and have to break their lease, um, that would have to be a negotiation between us. Um, so we would lose out, uh, to Chris's point. I believe the actual financial hardship is pretty much on Core Tree Services at this point, because they've already paid us for five months and they've not been able to utilize the space.
Um, I, I have one fin- final thing. In terms of, of the, the, this seems like a added use of, of Green Island Road on, you know, nearby. So Edison, is this not, is this within general wear and tear? Would this causes have to do, uh, the city to do, do more repairs, maintenance to Green Island Road because of this extra activity?
Um, uh, yes, certainly it will, uh, it will, uh, add, uh, some kind of, uh, wear and tear. But, uh, remember that the vehicles that will be coming in and out of that facility will be limited to leaving in the morning and coming back in the afternoon. There's no busy going back and forth in the, uh, facility. Uh, it will, it will, uh, contribute, but just a little bit. And, uh, I think you're aware also that the Green Island Road is up for, uh, a widening project. Uh, I think it will happen like, uh, um, in, in the near future.
Thank you, Edison Commissioner, Vice Chair Wong. On mute.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, I, I did have one, another question for you, if you don't mind. You mentioned that you have a five-year contract with PG&E to do this work. And someone mentioned that you have and not, you're not able to use this site, I guess, for the last five months while your permit has been pending. So are you operating now out of another yard or where, where is this work continuing from? Or is your contract with PG&E on hold while you wait for this permit?
No, we're, uh, in Napa, uh, right across the street from the Toyota dealership, right on Slasko Avenue.
So you have a, you have a temporary location that you're working out of?
Yes.
And, but you prefer this location, um, with Mr. DeFabios's site, even though it, it needs certain improvements that aren't there now?
Yes, because the site we're on is, is temporary also. My time is running out there. It's being developed. I happen to have some people there that are very friendly to us for the fact that we do provide a service that helps the whole entire valley there. And he appreciates it, appreciates that fact and the foundation that he works for. So they've allowed us to stay there for quite a while, but the time is running out because the land's being developed.
Okay, um, thank you. And I, I do think that, um, Commissioner Navarro has a development from our perspective about this is, as we see it, a temporary permit for two years right now. But as you yourself said, you do have, you know, a five-year contract for this work. So do you think that you're just going to finish this work up in, in two years? Or why is it that your sublease is only for, did I, did I mishear the five-year part of your contract?
Yeah, it's just, that's the way the, the R-lease was written up in the beginning, just because of the fact of PG&E or that, that entity can be very, um, unpredictable at times. So we didn't want to sign a lease for that long, for five years. So we decided on the two years and go from there. And then, you know, it's snowballed into where we're at now.
Okay, um.
But no, our work will not, our work will not end if we are still contracting for PG&E at the end of the two years and we don't, you know, get approval for whatever to stay there, you guys are gonna require us to do an insane amount of work. You know, I'll, I'll hopefully have another place. Um, you know, I'll I'll hopefully have another place to go to somewhere in that area to move my trucks to. At that time.
So even so even if your contract, if you had confidence, your contract was going to run five years with PJ&E successfully. Um, from your perspective, just crunching the numbers. It sounds like economically, you think it may just be more feasible to find a new location. Rather than make the the improvements that would be the standard requests that the city wants. Am I understanding that correctly?
No, it it it, this doesn't have anything really to do with that. I mean, uh. It's just the way, it's just the way it was set up, the way we got into the contract to lease the land. Um, what I'm saying is, at the end of two years, if we're still there, we'll see where we're at. And it, in our business, it's too far, it's too hard to look that far down the line. Nothing's, nothing's ever in stone. So this is what we're hoping we can do with you guys. You guys approve it as we approach that time in the two years. We can start having those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Goff?
Yeah, I know, said I was done, but I'm not. Um, I noticed in here, the application is actually stated it as a maintenance yard. And I was just thinking, storage of your trucks. Is there repairs that are planning on taking place onsite? And if so, um, do they involve fluids? Are you doing maintenance like oil changes, liquids, anything like that? That's my concern with this question.
No, we are, no, we are not.
So even though it's a maintenance yard, you don't do any major repairs to your vehicles there?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Goff. Uh, any other comments or questions? For the applicant? All right, do I have a recommendation?
I'll be happy to make a recommendation. I recommend that the uh Planning Commission of American Canyon approve the resolution. Uh, the City of American Canyon, California, approving a twenty-four-month temporary design permit and development for a maintenance vehicle yard at. Three five two Green Island Road, APN zero five seven dash one three zero dash zero zero four. File number PL twenty-one dash two zero zero two five.
I will second that.
Would you like a roll call vote? Okay, Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Navarro.
No.
Vice Chair Wong.
Aye.
And Chair Malari.
Aye.
All right. Moving on, Chris, thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. And Mr. DeFabio as well.
Thank you for your opportunity. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Or that's it for us?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to um active planning projects. Director Cooper?
Um, thank you, uh, Chair Malari and Planning Commission. Um, has some highlights for you. Um, what we have going on at the redevelopment department. And we work course very closely with Public Works Engineering and Edison. Different department, but all part of the same team. Um, we have a pre-application for uh Drive Through Coffee Shop. Um, at the corner of Holcomb Lane and Highway twenty-nine. It's on the opposite side of the street, the south side, um, where um you'll find General Plumbing. Think about, uh, General Plumbing is on one side, this is on the other side, it's an empty lot. Across the street is Canyon Corners and a little bit to the north is the new Hampton Inn Hotel that was approved recently. If you kind of give it some context. And then south of that property is um kind of an older house and then that kind of a warehouse building. And and the little house and stuff like that. So that's kind of where that is. There was an application on that property, oh gosh, about fifteen years ago. And it didn't move forward and so, um, this is a pre-application, this is an opportunity for the applicant. Um, to ask questions of staff that help them with due diligence issues. Um, in order to determine if their projects feasible or not. So um, I think, I think William um had a list of comments. I think that went out today, didn't it? Or tomorrow, maybe?
Uh, no, I uh, I was hesitant on one last comment, but it will go out tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. Um, that was just submitted at the beginning of this uh of the month, so a two-week turnaround is pretty good. And uh, a lot of engineering issues on that. Um, you know, Holcomb Lane's a private road and it's next to Caltrans and. So um, small parcel, potentially complex issues. Um, the uh Napa Cove project, um, let's see, it received its uh building permits yesterday. Uh, I think we in our review, we had it a couple of days earlier, but it it ended up taking a couple just longer. Um, and so they also have a grading permit, so we'll be seeing some activity on that site pretty soon.
Well, no change in the name of that project, huh?
Not so far. But.
Uh, Commissioner Wong has a question?
Hey, so Director Cooper, speaking of Napa Cove. Um, I know we had approved that, there was a lot of talk about the traffic calming, and I know they're working on something, whatever strategy they come up with. Um, is, will we get an inkling of that at Planning Commission? Or will we just find out once it's installed like everyone else?
Um, there's a host of things that the Public Works Department is doing. Um, to help with uh traffic calming on Melvin Road and citywide efforts on safety. I don't know how um plugged in Edison is, it's a little different division in Public Works, so I don't want to put Edison on the spot unless he wants to be. But I do know that that the Public Works Department is working on a variety of things. Um, and uh, that is a good segue, I think, into, I think, when, at the right time. Um, to have Erica come to the Planning Commission and fill you in on the plans, but I don't know if Edison can speak to any of it now.
Uh, I'm sorry, Brent, I'm not uh in tune to that uh program. But I have been coordinating with W Trans, the traffic engineer of the project. And uh, they have proposed some scope and we had uh Erica and I, and I have commented on that. And uh, they will submit a draft to us and then everybody, the the development, you know, planning, public works. Uh, will uh review that uh recommendation and uh and uh and uh propose uh whatever changes. Uh, necessary to implement the traffic calming that will be in line with the traffic calming program of Public Works. But it's, it's not gonna go out right away. We will have a chance to review and make sure that uh it applies to uh Melvin Road specifically.
Right, there there, um. Let's see, I know that at the council meeting on March, um, just very recently. Let's see, there was, um, there's federal funding from the American Rescue Act. And the city council allocated some funds um that will be spent towards um improving sidewalks. And drainage on Melvin Road. Uh, so I do know about that. And then as Edison mentioned, the Napa Cove project itself has a condition to take a look at traffic calming. Related to some of the impacts of that project on Melvin. So there's, there's that and and others as well. But I think that it might be just worthwhile to have um Erica come and she can kind of talk about all of those great things.
That would be lovely. Thank you, Director Cooper.
And uh, also, I would like to add that Napa Cove is also conditioned to contribute. Uh, on the storm drainage uh improvements along Melvin and James.
Um, let's see, our our FUMA modification um is close to being approved. You might remember, a year ago in January, the Planning Commission approved a use permit for FUMA. And they had kind of a uh manufacturing and um. Distribution and 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 the like. Um, had took on a partner that had a little changes, few changes. Just taking on a partner, self-acquire as a modification. So I think we've we've mostly gotten through those issues. Um, and so, um, there should be a delivery service out of Clamath Court fairly soon. The larger part of the project has been deferred um in court because of COVID. There were, I guess, there was some, some um folks that had to recover from that and then there's some supply issues and. Host of problems um that we hear about, maybe on other things, but has affected this as well. But the 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 delivery component um should be moving forward fairly soon. Um, let's see, on construction, there's been a whole lot of things that um have been approved. A lot of that um has fallen to a building and and Edison and his team and Public Works. Um, the PG and E Regional Center that the Planning Commission approved up in the Napa, there's Napa again, um, Napa Logistics Park. Um, those improvement plans um were approved and so that should be moving forward. They do have building permit applications in as well. In Watson Ranch, of course, lot ten, um, single-family homes, two hundred and nineteen of them. The rough grading permit was approved. Um, I'm keeping an eye on the Lemos Point Project, that's the modular one. Um, because I think we're all interested in in seeing them. Placed, how that's gonna work. Um, so I haven't forgotten about that. Um, I know they're all lined up, they're ready to go. Um, and so they've had a pre-construction meeting and so I've kind of keep my ear to the ground on that one. So we have a lot of things going on. Um, the one, one of them that we wish would go, was going on. Um, was a project the Planning Commission approved, the SDG two seventeen Warehouse off Commerce Court. It was appealed by um some unions and they've recently requested an additional six-month continuation. On the city council consideration of the appeal. And so that's been moved to Au- August, I think, maybe September. So, um, hopefully something can can move forward around then. And then we're working uh really hard on the general plan. Um, we have uh, of course, our housing survey. Um, we have, um, Nicole has been working overtime on scheduling workshop meetings. We have a couple for the housing element and in April. And then we have a general plan discussion with the city council on April fourteenth. It's the second meeting the council has um in April. So we have a number of things going on and then um our consultants are working on some pop-up materials. That'll label staff to be able to reach out further in our community um to attend um meetings and go to clubs. Um, and then finally, I know it's another thing that Nicole's working really hard on. Is um, there are specific stakeholder interviews for providers, um, housing developers. Um, and service agencies to get their perspectives on housing issues. So we're really getting a lot of information. Um, and so it's definitely robust with with. Um, data and information. Takes a lot of time. From everybody on the team, uh, Williams is working really hard as well on it. Um, so. That's kind of the update from the redevelopment department.
Planning Director Cooper. Um, there's a project going back a bit. Um, that I'm just curious as to what if anything is going on with it. I forget the name and I honestly forget the exact location. But it was uh on the east side of twenty-nine, near Napa Junction Road. Um, not connected to Watson Ranch. Um, do you recall the one I'm I'm thinking of?
I think I do. I think you may be referring to, there was a uh business that was going to sell pottery. Is that?
No.
Are you referring to this, is it active application for mixed use?
I think it's an active application, uh, still, um.
It's on our list. It's the Sunstone Project and the applicant requested um a deferral. Although, um, kind of on hold, but I think Willie might have um an update. I know that there was some conversations recently with the applicant, that they were gonna make some changes to the project.
Yeah, the the changes are kind of substantial. It's still in the preliminary phase, but they previously wanted those twenty units in one building. They're considering four buildings with five units each, so they're back to the drawing board a bit before we submit it.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I knew there was something going on, so. Uh, and we just hadn't heard about it in quite a while. That's why I was like, okay, this one's on my mind a little bit.
Um, Director Cooper, I had a question. So I know we've had a lot of um discussions and our ordinance is finally effective now for the um fossil fuel station. Um, ordinance, effective, I think, just earlier this month, right? But I see seven eleven is still on the project list. I was just curious. Why that was?
I, well, I think, I think um. We've actually had inquiries from the property owner for a different project at that location. Um, and so I think we've been a little bit, maybe um, we kind of need to button that one up. Because, yeah, uh, in accordance with our new ordinance, the application cannot proceed. Um, I think we just need to send them a letter, but I think they got the word, but yeah, we need to kind of put that one to rest.
Thank you. I I just wanted to double check my understanding.
So you're answering correctly. We got a little lazy because the applicant, the property owner's been telling us to bring in some other, um, I think, auto parts store on that location.
Interesting. Um, and I did have sort of an unrelated question and this may not be your bailiwick. So it may not be your, your, the person I should ask, but I remember there was a um, like a workshop or a meeting. And all the developers were invited and I think one of the comments that came up, or maybe it was discussed at a different meeting, but it was about having a um. I'm not sure exactly what you call it, not your role, but a different role that who actively works on trying to woo. Sp- a specific businesses that fit our profile to our city. Um, and I know you kind of have that hat right now, but I think there's a um, a certain like job where it's like a specific role. Can you help me out here?
Yeah, I I I think that was discussed, um, is, is that's really the role of the Chamber of Commerce. There are cheerleaders to bring in business and and that's, um, you know, if we, we talk about. Who's in charge of what, it's it's really, that's a kind of a more of a Chamber of Commerce role. Um, and and as government, we're, which would be our, yeah, our role is to streamline processes. Make it easy, you know, understand where our regulations might need changing. Um, it, when it does, but having efficient uh, you know, processes and the like. Um, the other component to um that workshop is to sort of highlight the realization on a couple of things. One of them is that um, doing a good job of having streamlined regulations and processes. Enables development to happen, which then generates a variety of municipal revenues and taxes. That then can be used to provide services for our community, which then makes it more attractive for folks to come in and. And for businesses to locate in our city. And then the other part of that workshop had to do with how much of in the to-do. in the to-do list for a developer, when they want to locate the city, is, are things that they've got to talk to the city about? And how much are things where they're talking to utilities, financing, understanding the market, interest rates, there's like this whole other world apart from what the city does that has, in perhaps some ways, greater influence on whether things are built in our city or not.
Okay, because I thought it was a really good discussion. And I could actually see merit to having someone dedicated to developing and cultivating the type of businesses we want here in American Canyon. Because otherwise, if it's just left up to the free market, everybody wants to fill up the 29 corridor with gas stations and fast food. Because that's what's profitable for them.
Well, yes, that's perhaps true. And that was one of the motivations for our, our Broadway District Plan and some of the changes that we've made to it since then. So that it isn't just left to the lowest common denominator in a sense. That's, you know, we want it more walkable and more residential and other components as well. There are practical issues with the city reaching out and, and getting developers. Apart from having a staff dedicated to do that. But in the absence of that, I really appreciate our working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. I do get inquiries from the executive director to contact somebody if with one issue or another. In fact, I think we even had one today that William helped them with. Where the questions come up, you know, what about this issue? And we kind of figure out how they can be helped. Actually, I think it was Edison that helped them. Anyway, we do get, we do get inquiries. Yeah, and, and we try to help in that role as best we can with our, with our limited resources that come with the world we live in.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wong. Any other updates, Director Cooper?
No, I'm just glad to answer your questions and I always enjoy this part of our meeting.
Great. Moving on to any commissioner items, does any of the commissioners have anything to share with the group?
No, I have two. So just curious on if there's anybody that's gonna be attending the, I think it's the American Planning Association Conference. Just a reminder that there is a registration hike. I think it's like you save 50 bucks. The dates are April 30th to the 3rd. Or if you're gonna do the online one, I think, I don't know the dates, but it's sometime in mid-May. And then also, you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce. And I know that we have the, the meet me, meet me in the streets or maybe, yeah, meet me in the streets coming up in the summer months. So, you know, perhaps just putting it out there to the commission, if, you know, we want to solidify which one that we would like to partake in, set up a table, be out in the community. I think that would be really beneficial for residents and for us just to kind of get out there and just show everybody our, the collaboration and the input that we would, you know, appreciate from the city. And then also just kind of being out there and in the forefront, answering questions. I highly recommend if we can kind of get, I have to look up the dates, but I think the first one is July 13. And I don't remember anything after that. But if everybody's interested, we can get that going. I can reach out to the chamber.
Thank you, Chair Malari. We are actually registered to attend all of them. And I'm glad you reminded me. It seems a little out, but it's, it's gonna happen soon enough. And so we are going to having a, we do have a table reserved for it. And so it'd be, yeah, I know the commission has offered its services to help provide information and meet residents and talk about housing element and other fun things. And so, yeah, that's something that we can get our, on the books. Appreciate that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we could probably do like a poll, who can go and which times. At least there could be a representative, a commissioner or two at each of those to show our presence and our support.
The sandwich board for Commissioner Altman, because I think that was a plan before. He was gonna walk around with a sandwich. If I remember correctly, that was discussed.
Did we? Okay.
You know, Commissioner Goff, I think a sandwich board works better on you, given the height advantage that you have. It'd be a little more noticeable for me. And you might as well just stand it on the ground.
Is it okay to walk around with a sandwich?
I'll wear a sandwich board. I'm a team player. All right. All right. Well, if that's it, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
You don't need a motion.
I don't know. All right.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, 7:46.
Always appropriate.
I'm very formal. All right, meeting adjourned. Everyone have a great evening. Talk to you guys soon.
Okay, good night.